...noon and council members that could, thank you. Why don't we, if we could, Mr. Sprague, would you start with introductions yourself? And would you go around?
Would you like me to introduce you?
No, you.
Oh, okay. I'm Roger Sprague.
And Dick Anderson.
Chetna Rikus.
Gary Yulison.
Wes Ryan.
Richard Appicello.
David Hawker.
Thank you.
Mayor, before we get started, I'm wondering if we do have vacant council positions for tonight or for this afternoon, because we are going to have some PowerPoint, I'm wondering if you'd consider a rearrangement for these down at the end. It's a hard view of the screen from there.
(laughing).
At your pleasure.
Gentlemen, if you'd like to, you're certainly welcome to come down.
There's just a PowerPoint on that screen there, right?
Right.
Yeah, because we've got that right.
Okay. Just wanted to offer.
Okay.
Thank you.
This afternoon, our plan is to go no longer than 5:00. Not sure whether we'll do that, but want to share information this afternoon and gather information. This is the workshop on the LID, Local Improvement District. And perhaps, Mr. Hawker, you could give us some background on this and then we could go into the material. And then after that, maybe take comments from the public and then council could, or we could do some discussion.
Sure. Well, actually, as far as the background, I'm going to have staff do most of that. What we thought would do, if it meets your pleasure, take a half an hour, maybe a little bit longer, to go through the issues, then turn it over to public comment for perhaps a half an hour if needed, and then council could discuss, ask questions, whatever. There are a number of issues involved here and I can't suggest that we're going to resolve anything tonight, this afternoon. The idea is to get everybody back up to speed, identify and see if we can't clarify some of the more difficult issues that we face and give you enough background so that you can make a decision. So with that, I think I'll have Stephanie Reed and Terry Chamberlain, our city engineer and associate engineer, give you a little background on this. Are you ready for the, okay?
Sure. We'll just, afternoon, we'll just begin with the PowerPoint presentation and go into the background of the LID. So while we're getting that online here, on April 22nd, 2013, City Council adopted a resolution to create a local improvement district for sewer and road paving, the boundaries of which we'll go into, but we'll call it for short the Voyage Lake LID. So what happened is, council approved the formation, we went back to the engineer for final design. The formation was based on a preliminary engineering report. So during the final design stages is when some issues were raised, we weren't sure were fully addressed during the preliminary discussions. So that's why we're bringing this back to you this afternoon. First of all, this will come into play a little bit more, but later as part of your options, but the original boundary is the green shaded and was intended for primarily incorporated single-family residential zones. And that's the green shaded. Later, when the preliminary engineering work was being done, the blue shaded area also was included in the final LID boundary that you all approved was the total of the blue and the green. Okay? So Terry Chamberlain is going to talk about, oh, wait, I'm going to go back here. So here's the four issues that we're going to talk about tonight. The first one that Terry's going to go, talk about is the city needs right-of-way dedication or standard utility easements, and we have an area that we don't have those. So Terry's going to explain that.
In the pink, in the pink area, that strip of land is basically a private road that comes in to the Lake Grove area. And the pink area on the north end is, I don't find any type of easement. I find there's a recorded, there's a recorded survey that was recorded, but I don't see any dedication to the public. So there's a private roadway that been surveyed and the survey's been recorded, but there's nothing that I can see that grants the city the right to put a sewer line there. So that one easement that we would need across that piece of property. The next, the orange area is in Lake Grove area. That is also a private easement owned by all the property owners around it. It's been discussed before. As part of the creation of those tracks, I think there's three tracks there, owned by each of the property owners adjoining it, they granted each other an easement for sewer purposes. So the property owners have the right to put a sewer line there. But there's nothing in the record that says that the city has the right to do it. So that's an issue that will probably be discussed. And the last piece, the blue area, that's where the sewer line will be going across private property and we'll just have to acquire an easement on those, on that section. So those are the three areas that we will need to obtain easements. And I have easements on the blue area, description's already written by the engineer. But the orange and the pink area, the orange area in particular, they've been appointed, a discussion whether or not we need to get an easement across that or not.
And I might add that that probably is something that should have happened well before now. We should not have gotten this deep into it without acquiring those easements. And that's probably the first thing that needs to happen before we can move forward with this.
Just may I ask you a question, because I'm a little confused?
Sure.
Okay. The pink area, you said there's an easement, but we don't have an easement.
There's a recorded survey for a road easement.
Access easement.
But nothing for us?
Nothing that I can see as public.
And then the orange is for a sewer, but not our sewer?
Right. When the property owners mutually granted those tracks to each other for access, they reserve the right in that deed for them to put a sewer line there.
Okay. And then the little zigzag part down here, there is no easement at all?
No, that's, yeah, the design engineer, that's how he designed the route of the sewer line, so it's on private property, so we just have to go out and get that easement.
Okay. Just wanted to be clear.
I would add too, that we have a potable water line in serving, starting with West Devil's Lake Boulevard and serving this property, these properties. So the yellow or the orange, the pink, there is already a city water line there that we need, that we don't have an easement for, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
What does it take to acquire easements?
A legal description written and then put in an easement document, and then the property owners would have to sign and grant the easements. And I have a general feeling that most of the properties are in favor of doing that, but I, right now, I couldn't guarantee that all of them would.
And do we need all of them?
Yes.
Thank you.
One other question.
Oh.
Is getting an easement for utilities similar to taking of property so the city has the right to go ahead and do that if they deem it's necessary?
That's correct.
Okay.
But it's, it's really not a taking if the owners agree. That's correct.
Correct. But if you've got one, a holdout or something of that sort, then I was thinking that by the city could force that.
Is that true?
Yes. The city have the right of condemnation to acquire sewer easements.
Thank you.
And I point out that a lot of what was discussed is that the property owners granted easements to each other for those purposes, so there's a lot of ammunition there for the benefited property owners to those easements to force the other property owners. So if you have a holdout among six people, they all have a pretty good, strong argument to force the other to connect based on those private agreements. But the point that Terry's trying to make is, it's not an easement to the city. None of those things says, "grantee city of Lincoln City or public."
Gotcha. So again, what that means, and the city needs to just advance our own easement capacity further?
Yeah, as Mr. Hawker mentioned, really the first thing you do when you form a local improvement district is, number one, acquire necessary right-of-way or utility easements to facilitate the preliminary design of the project.
So while this issue was sort of first, one of the larger or complicated issues is the methodology that was used in the preliminary report. And to simplify things here, basically, the sewer assessments were based on existing lots. So whether your lot had a home on it or was vacant, if it was a subdivided lot that was already existing, that got assessed, one sewer hookup, basically one hookup per lot. Except, there's an R1-5 zone property that was quite large compared to the typical lots that were being assessed. And they agreed to assess that lot with three. The second issue then comes into the pavement costs, the same thing, is we just took the number of properties that were adjacent to the street paving with their frontage, however many properties there were, regardless of their length, their length or their corners or any of their physical locations, one lot per, one hookup, one pavement assessment per lot. So, but when we looked further into whether that was fair, this slide shows that the properties in brown, those are zoned multifamily, okay? And the properties in salmon color are zoned R1-5. With the potential, using a formula from planning, this could be, this may be high estimate, might be low, but the average lots that can be subdivided based on these zones is quite higher than 3, 1, 1, you know, each of these existing lots got assessed one. Well, when you look at this area in this orange salmon color, there's potentially 51 units that could be subdivided. And same with the multifamily, there's potential of 31 units that could go in, yet they only received one assessment per lot. That's essentially what we're struggling with here. We want to make sure that people are aware of that and question that, the question did come up during the final plan, is that fair? So to go a little further into the fairness of the Lake Cove area, these were the lots that Terry was talking about. They're actually tracks, but they're dedicated for common easements or common access purposes. So this, so the tracks in pink, the property owner of the, the owners of this area do not want the properties in pink assessed. Either they're part of a road, already a road, a shared road access agreement, or there's a boat ramp that they don't feel that any potential changes could be made to that. Again, when you're looking at assessing based on potential, we can't say that what's there is always going to be there if it's zoned for something different. And that's again, sort of what we're saying, is these homes, these lots that are not assessed, is that fair? Yes, right now, there's not a home to serve on it, but will that, is that the way it will be in the future?
Stephanie, the lot that's in green, was that?
Pardon?
The lot in green, was that the one that was left off?
Yeah. Now, that was one, so there's a couple just housekeeping corrections from the preliminary to the final, and we discovered that during the final. And one is, this green lot, the property owners want to add that to the assessment, they want a hookup to that lot. And the yellow there in the corner north is, needs to be removed from the LID, it was inadvertently added, wasn't intended to be part of this LID. So those are sort of the housekeeping changes and kind of straightforward, these, you know, if we agree with this assessment and methodology, then there were some errors on the map, on the original report. The problem with that is that we do need to go back and do a resolution, right, Richard? Some kind of update or resolution to correct that for the record.
Stephanie?
Yeah.
Was that last one on the bottom there, the one you were just talking about, the green? The one that was listed on the bottom of that, on the previous slide? No, the before?
Sorry.
The bottom one there, the last one? Is that the green lot? Okay.
Yeah, the green lot is just kind of tucked in here, and for some reason that was considered, well, what happened was during the preliminary report, that was considered as part of this shared road access tracks. But actually, it's a track by itself and it can be developed. So they want a sewer connection to that, they want to add that in.
One other question. In your figuring, the total area that's involved with calculating the SDCs and that sort of thing, do you include the roads and the boat ramp, or are those excluded or can they be excluded?
As proposed, as the preliminary report is, those are excluded.
Excluded?
Excluded.
Okay, thank you.
Right. So one other issue that did come up during final design is, let's be sure that we're aware of the standard we're applying to gravel, to paving this gravel road and doing the road improvements for this section. You know, we have city standards, but we have a situation here that has an existing conditions, existing driveway grades, existing widths, a lot of existing built-out environments. So what we propose to do is rebuild this upgrade so we have a good rock base and widen, and pave only 16 feet wide. We want to put, make sure there's two-foot gravel shoulders on each side so you can walk, or you can get, you know, there's a space between the edge of pavement to walk on. And for the most part, the sections are going to be shed so that the stormwater flow from the newly paved streets will go into a ditch sort of on the uphill side. Because of this, we needed to look carefully at how the stormwater was being routed, make sure that we routed it, we shed it into these ditches that have a way to, we knew how it was going to get to the lake. And again, consequently, because of looking at the stormwater issues, we are recommending a change from the preliminary report to include water quality facilities. We don't want to add oil and grease or runoff from an impervious area and increase the pollutants going into the lake. That would be kind of counterproductive.
What would those facilities include?
Well, we're looking at, perhaps the ditch could include some swale areas for some vegetation, but more, more they would be at the point source, at discharge points, and there would be, you know, water quality manholes that have a sump and perhaps some kind of treatment for, a filter for the, to filter out the oil and grease. And detention so that the sediments settle and don't, yeah, so they're not, we haven't looked at, you know, there's so, there's so many varieties available, and we, you just need to look at the, how much room you have, what's offered, what pollutants you're trying to remove, and your flows and stuff. And so we haven't nailed that down, but it would be some kind of facility, and it would be a few thousand dollars at least. I mean, those aren't cheap.
And a fairly expensive facility, I imagine.
Yeah, I mean, there'll be, there's several thousand dollars, you know, to build and then to maintain. So it's a, it's just more than we had envisioned when, during the preliminary thought through the preliminary report, didn't address stormwater quality at all, didn't really address runoff at all either. I mean, not just the quality, but the stormwater path. So we really nailed that down with the final design. But it added costs from the original estimate. So we're really at this minimum next steps, and we're going to say, you know, if you want to keep everything else whole, the very least we need to do again is to go back and correct the errors in the, in the mapping, the original recommendation, the original LID formation. And I guess these are actually backwards. And for sure, make sure we have easements and access tracks dedicated to, that are dedicated for public utilities and clean that up. Because if we can't get that cleaned up, we can't really do much in the Lake Cove area or beyond the existing right-of-way that we have. The hard part, I think where the, where the options get more, you know, varied here is, if you do choose to look at the, what we're calling the inequity issues or potential perceived inequity issues, you've got several options, and Richard Appicello laid these out. I won't go into the details of them, but for one thing, you could, you could abandon the LID, of course. You could create a new LID based on boundaries that don't, that you feel more reflect the intent and what you want to do to serve that area. There certainly are existing homes out there on septic systems that do want the option of sewer. As far as the redevelopment, the undeveloped lots, you know, those are more of the unknowns, and that might be what the boundary changes result in. You could re-advertise and re-notice the hearing and reject the methodology that was used and ask the engineer to come back with some other methodologies. You could also do an advanced finance district, proceed as is, put an advanced finance district over the existing LID boundary, and form a district so that if people do hook in or petition for connections beyond what they were assessed, at that point, they will need to pay toward that, that change and the money, that their cost would then go back to the people originally, from the original LID. There's, you know, a little bit of, you know, accounting there, but we could, we could track that. So if this home, if this R1-5 zone came in and said, "Okay, I do want to put 30 units here," then they pay back of those, their proportionate share to the existing, to the people who have already paid in that LID, I guess, for form of, wherever they are with their payments. So we're not, not knowing the details, but we could make that work. And I don't know if you guys have some things to add here.
I guess I'll just summarize those last options are, first option is contemplated in the ordinance and in the resolution, just stop, you don't have to go forward, you can just decide not, not to proceed. The second option, and those bullet points, was essentially, well, you can go, you can go, but you can go smaller. You can pull it back to what it was originally going to be when we started this, we talked about this started out as the original LID proposal and then it expanded from that. You can go back to the original LID proposal, which was a smaller, mostly smaller lots on the southern end, and abandon the rest. That would probably require that you redo the formation hearing and reallocate the costs, and the cost per owner might go up, will go up, because there'd be fewer. But those costs would be shared equitably. The third option would be also to redo the formation hearing, but direct the engineer to use the potential unit method. Don't just count one per lot, look at the zoning and try to make the allocation of benefited costs or to benefited properties based upon the planning department's estimate of the number of units that could go in the lot. So that's the, also requiring a redo of the formation hearing, the potential unit method assessment against all the lots. That would bring the costs down significantly per unit. People that own large parcels would pay more, however, because they have more potential unit. If you were to go with either option, going back to the smaller original proposal or going to the potential unit method, the fourth option that was listed actually works with all the options. So the fourth option was, add the advanced finance district on top of this. So the advanced finance district on top of the LID works with the proposal that you have now. It would work with drawing it back just as the smaller proposal, or it would work with the potential unit method. So the advanced finance district is a way to keep people from laying back, waiting in the wings until someone else builds the improvement and then trying to take advantage of it without paying their fair share. So we adopted this ordinance last year, it's also called a reimbursement district ordinance, and you just did one at, I believe, the last meeting. We, all it is, is basically, staff makes the allocation, the fair share allocation just as in the LID. If someone wants to come in and add, expand the LID or add internally to the LID, they have to redo the costs again, and then somebody has to pay, and then everybody else probably will get a credit. We probably won't be mailing checks to people until they actually have either paid it off or have been paying for a while, because I imagine most everyone's going to pay over time. So the final option there really works as an overlay on everything to protect the LID from someone basically trying to take advantage of the LID up-fronting the cost.
Yes.
Question on that last option. That would not increase anybody's cost, it may in fact lower some costs.
Yeah, the advanced finance district or reimbursement district, if anyone wanted to add units after this LID is approved, so let's say you have a lot and it's capable of division, so you're sitting back waiting, "Okay, I'll only pay one assessment, and as soon as it goes through, I'll just get another hookup." Yes, you're going to pay SDCs, but you're thinking, you maybe think you're going to avoid the fair share cost. Well, you're not. The advanced finance district, on top of it, will stop you and make you have to pay. It will also make staff have to do a lot of math. They will have to then go back and recalculate the fair share, and then everyone will get a notice saying, "Your fair share has been reduced to X." So by adding a unit, it's going to reduce everyone else's costs.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation.
Stephanie, could you go back one slide, please? No, just one.
This one's my-
There it is. The second one is to address easements. Okay, thank you.
I changed the language in that, really, is easements right-of-way issue, and then the access track is, because that's what those tracks are in Lake Cove. That was really it, as far as our initial presentation, and then questions I wanted to hear from citizens present. We can come back with answers if-
Not that it makes a difference, but back to where you were talking about the easements, does easements get eliminated or not needed if you go back to the original grouping? If you go to that map?
Yes, if you go to the original grouping, there are no easements needed because those four properties in Lake Cove are served by, they have frontage on Lake Drive and on Voyage Ave there. So I, well, two of them are. There may be an easement additionally, because see, these two don't really have frontage. So this has got like a corner frontage, I guess. So we would probably need an easement here as well, but other, that would be pretty straightforward, the two properties rather than all of the- than all of the shared properties that are shared ownership.
So, I guess what, I'm just wondering, not that it affects, well, will affect the cost, if for some reason we conclude to go back to the original, the group down below that's already, you eliminate the easement issues and you eliminate a large number of potential entities to divide the costs, correct?
That's correct, all of the brown and, all of the shaded properties would be out, but then they would not contribute, so the overall cost per property that is left could be, yeah, would go up.
Yeah, goes up significantly.
Well, the project cost also goes down.
But, yes.
The, what was that?
The project cost also goes down.
Goes down, okay.
I have a question about that cost. Have you done any preliminary estimates as to what the difference in cost per lot would be for what that green area was, or was that the, the original area, wasn't that in green on the previous map?
Yes, let me go back to that.
Or you always yellow, I guess. Well, there's green.
Yeah, the green and the-
The cost at that, with that display there versus what it would be if the rest of it was included, have you calculated the difference in cost?
No, I haven't done that.
Got a seat-of-the-pants guess? I'd love to put you on the spot.
Yeah, I just love guessing, too. Darn it, I thought, well, let's just, we're talking about, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, so there'd be about 15 hookups that wouldn't participate. Each hookup is about assessed at, what's the, 4,000?
Three thousand.
Three thousand?
$3,296 per lot.
So, what did I, how many did I say, 15 times 3,000?
That's 150,000.
So, that would be then distributed among the 40 or 50s or so, 52, I think that would be remaining.
One thing also to consider is that-
A few hundred dollars each.
Right now, we're at about 90% designed.
90% what?
Designed.
Designed.
I have set of plans that are about 90% complete for the entire area, so we spent roughly about $20,000 to get to that point.
Well, we've spent 20,000 to get to the preliminary plans, and another 20 for these final plans, so total of 40 invested already into this engineering report.
Now, the expanded plan includes redoing the road from West Devils Lake Road down to the district, right, heading down to the, towards the lake, but if you did the, just the, the original group, that would not be included?
Correct.
And one of the, I believe the street allocation, the methodology for the street allocation of cost was just one, one unit, one assessment, as opposed to a frontage assessment, and obviously, there are lots with significantly more frontage than others.
So that street would be included then with, if we went with the smaller, the original plan, that that street was part of that?
I believe that the street-
No, 15th was not, just Voyage.
Was not included, it was not part of the original request.
Yeah, just Voyage was, but 15th wasn't, so, and it's, yeah, and originally, we hadn't, when, we didn't spend much time, once we added that boundary, that's when we looked at the pavement and what was gonna get served and how. With the original intent, though, that in green is the only area that was gonna be in the LID, so the pavement did not go up 15th Street, it did go in front of this property here, where, you know, where it was fronting on Voyage, but this, the green is the only places that we were proposing to pave originally.
So the pavement on 15th would stop there at the west boundary of the green?
Correct, if that, if this lot was out, as originally thought.
What's the split between the assessments or costs of the street and the sewer?
The proposed industry, like I said, with $3,296.33, and the road assessment with $3,080, $3,080.
Could the owners of the lots that are there in blue, and then the white down below that, there, south of 15th, could those owners opt in only to do the paving, if we went with just the original design?
The only reason I hesitate is, I mean, yes, it would be possible, but then, if 15th, if this lot did want to develop, we wouldn't want them hooking, their only frontage for sewer then would be on northeast Voyage. They couldn't, you know, we wouldn't pay, we wouldn't want to pave without sewer being there in case it was potential for development, that's the only thing.
You get a lot of road cuts.
Right.
That's right.
But, you know, it's possible.
Why don't we then take comments from the public at this point? They've heard what we've heard, and we can keep sharing. I don't have a sign-up, but if you want to just come forth, that'd be great, and give you five minutes.
Five or three?
Five, yeah, why don't we, and if you'd use the light, Kathy, that'd be helpful if you can, okay? Anybody want to make comments or talk us through any of this? Come on up.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name is Rod Kaufman, I live at 1385 Northeast Lake Drive, which is within the original proposed LID. When we first had our initial hearings a little over a year ago, there were several issues brought up at that time that are being brought up now. One was the fairness issue, which is a big one, is that every property owner was being assessed an equal value, but some of these properties, as we're finding out, can be divided into multiple units. And I think if I got the figures right from Stephanie, one can be divided into 51 possible units, one into 31 possible units, and there were 52 original units in the original LID, or in the original LID plus the addition. A lot of, when we talked a year ago, a lot of it was expensed to each individual property owner. My wife and I live on social security, we don't have $23,000 to invest in a system, which includes the paving, the sewer in the street, and the E1 pump, and hooking that up. If we made a equitable division, well, what could happen, that would decrease the cost, you know, extensively on our behalf, which would be helpful. The other thing is the paving, and I think Stephanie brought this up, the existing street through there, to get a 16-foot wide paving with two-foot wide curbs is 20 feet, and there are sections of that road that are not 20 feet available. And seeing some kind of design or some kind of issue, you know, they're going ahead of what would be possible in some of these areas, because this was an old county road, and the driveway I live on comes actually into the street easement, and to get a street through there without taking my driveway out and making it totally inaccessible would be almost impossible. So if they can make it, you know, variations in this, that would be helpful as well. Also, the paving, when they talk about not paving on 15th Street, if you come down our road in the winter, 15th Street is the muddiest part of our entire road, and if they choose to go with the original LID and don't pave from Voyage up to West Devils Lake Road, that is the worst part of what we deal with on a muddy, ongoing basis. And the last thing is the original 52 lots and a potential of 82 additional lots that could be developed. Has that many lots been taken into the design of the system? Can it handle 100 and whatever, that would be 30-some units? Would everybody hooked up into an E1 pump going into a two-inch pressurized line? Or does that need to be a bigger system, a more, you know, design system? And I think that's my concerns today.
Great. Any questions, council? Thank you, Mr. Kaufman.
Your Honor, just for clarification, I'm not sure if Stephanie mentioned it, but my understanding is that the system was designed for the maximum build-out.
Yeah.
It wasn't designed for the allocation, it was designed for the maximum build-out.
Anyone else?
Brian Green, 1490 Northeast Lake Drive, Lincoln City. Gentlemen and Stephanie, you know, there really is a really easy answer to this assessment issue, and that is, that was item number four on the board, the bottom one. Assessing, you know, each lot, or one hookup per lot, that's how they're presently configured, and then if someone decides to subdivide and add lots in the future, or add the hookups, they can be assessed for that. It was being referred to as an advanced finance district, but you have an ordinance that calls it a reimbursement district, and it's all there in black and white, very easy to put into place, and whether you, we end up with, with, you know, 40-some lots in the original proposal, or the additional 60 lots, or somebody subdivides and we have 84 lots, everybody will end up paying the same. And, and we don't have to go backwards by reinventing or passing a new resolution to somehow change the assessment formula, everybody, it's as close to perfection in terms of everyone paying equally as you can get, and you're guaranteeing it going forward. I just don't see, it's a great solution, frankly, I wasn't aware that this reimbursement district existed until Mr. Hawker made me aware of it in his, in his letter to the property owners, so I appreciate that. And I suggest that you leave open the possibility for a subdivider to hook up to gravity sewer. I don't know that, I would hope that it's not an absolute requirement that every lot in this, within these boundaries necessarily have an E1 system, if it's more economical and makes more sense to, at that future date and time, to be able to look at and say, you know, it's really a lot easier and more economical for that person close to West Devils Lake Road to hook up to the sewer line running down West Devils Lake Road, leave that, leave open the option for that person to do that. Oh, with respect to the Lake Cove Drive easements, what wasn't mentioned, although I think Richard was kind of referring to it, that the property owners that are in favor, which are the vast majority, in terms of the levers they have against the property owners that aren't in favor, the easement that's, the only valid easement that's there, it not only talks about, that they all agree to provide reciprocal, or that they have created an easement for sewer, but they actually agree to participate in any future sewer LID. So, I mean, it's pretty explicit, and I have difficulty seeing how a property owner is going to, you know, to resist that seriously in the Lake Cove Drive area. Another point, and the cost difference, whether you include, you exclude Lake Cove Drive or not, first of all, we're only talking sewer, we're not, there's no paving in Lake Cove Drive, so we're just talking the difference in the sewer cost. If you look at the number of lots, this is, I think it's 13, and the extent of the sewer line, it looks to me like, you know, it's about a wash, you're sizing, you're downsizing the project, and you have less participants. If you, when you take the total cost of that, the installation of that line, with the higher number of participants versus the lesser line with the lesser number of participants, I think you come out pretty close to about the same. So somebody's gonna do the math and figure it out, but I don't think there's gonna be a great difference, so, in terms of the fair, or the equities or the cost to those left in, if you decide to exclude Lake Cove Drive, it's not gonna be that much different, I don't think. Let me see if I have anything else, it's out of your hair. Oh, I do, and I think hopefully Paul Robertson will speak to this on behalf of DLWID, but, and I like what I hear about the road improvements in terms of adding water quality facilities. They might, they add some to the cost, but they're not that expensive, these are natural facilities like bioswales and stuff. My understanding, Dr. Dave Crimp about this, is there, he said, I thought he said a couple thousand, maybe more than that, but it's a good thing for the lake. I'm glad you wanted to leave the existing grassy drainage on the side of the road, should go to the north, to the north side, the upside, like Stephanie suggested, but as you get close to the lake, putting some better drainage facilities, some better filtering would be good. Lastly, in terms of talking about impermeable surfaces, or adding impermeable surface, if you go out there and look at that rock, I mean, that rock road, just, we keep adding rock and rock and rock to it, it's pretty darn impermeable as it exists, and putting asphalt over it, maybe a little bit more impermeable, maybe, but I kind of doubt it. The other thing is, you know, every year, we have that gravel truck coming down the road a couple of times a year, dumping gravel with sand and everything, and eventually all that goes into the lake. That would, will stop when we get the road asphalted, so I'm not sure there wouldn't be a net benefit ecologically to the lake without, even with asphalt not adding, continuing to add gravel, so, and then with the addition of bioswales or whatever water quality facilities you're talking about, that'll just improve the situation for the lake. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Anyone else, some comments? Afternoon.
An early meeting. John Oxenholt, 2002 Northwest 36th Street, and I'm here to talk a little bit about the LID as an affected property owner. For me, just to give you guys a little background, this is an example of, that everyone should be very careful when they accept an invitation. I got involved with this when the organizers of the LID and the city came to me and said, "Look, we're missing a big opportunity to pick up a valuable piece of lakefront land and add that to the sewer, and we've got a couple of folks that are not cooperating with easements, hey, why don't you join us? Number one, you'll lower the cost for everybody, because the incremental cost is-" Number one, you'll lower the cost for everybody, because the incremental cost to sewer Lake Cove Drive versus the benefit derived from the fees being charged lowers the cost for everybody outside Lake Cove Drive. And in addition, you're a good guy, give us an easement for free." I said, "All right, sounds like the right thing to do." I find myself here, I guess, wondering why we're here. We've heard it both from the city attorney and the city engineer, that if you remove Lake Cove Drive, which happens to be 90% of the properties are either my father's, where he lives on his property for 40-plus years with no intent to develop it, it happens to be zoned multifamily, and they put up some number like 40 units, which putting apartments on lakefront land, I don't think is ever a economical or viable situation. So why are we here if, and I think there's separate issues. The easement issue, I get that, that's an issue that should be discussed, but the assessment methodology, I mean, this thing went through public hearing after public hearing after public hearing. No one complained about the assessment methodology, there was no issue. One lot, one assessment. And matter of fact, I received multiple letters showing exactly what the assessment was going to be, $3,200 a lot. So I have a sincere question as to how we got here, and the reason, I don't want to get too far off track, but if there was some sort of perception of, hey, you know, John Oxenholt has done some developments, he owns some property here, maybe he's got deep pockets, let's stick him with some stuff, I don't think that, I'm not a conspiracy-minded guy, but there have been some instances where I'm realizing, and I've had some people approach me and say, "Hey, you've been treated differently." So common sense perspective, why are we here discussing assessment methodology when everyone agrees that everyone's assessments, including Mr. Kaufman's, are lower if Lake Cove Drive, including my properties, are in there, and my father's properties? Now that being said, I want to be fair, I want to see the whole lake sewered. I don't want to take unfair advantage of anything, I don't want that perception. There's a number of things that I'm willing to do, and let's also not discount the fact that there are two easements that I, on property that I have, that I think are valuable easements, that I really want to cooperate with the city on. In addition, the third easement that Kibbie contests should not be granted or is not valid. I think sitting down with Richard for 15 or 30 minutes, I think it could be worked through, because I think it's very clear that it is a valid easement. So I'd like to work with the city on easements. I guess I'm willing, you know, to consider still cooperating, maybe under some reimbursement methodology, I think there should be a sunset clause on that. But Chris, if you'd sort of hand out these papers, because I see, as I see it, there's three options, and I don't think getting rid of the LID should be one of them. I mean, you get private folks that have come together in an overwhelming majority to pay for sewer and pay for pavement at no cost to the city. I think that's a wonderful thing, and I think it should be encouraged. Again, I believe that the current assessment methodology, as adopted by the city's consultant, as adopted by the city's engineer who actually walked the properties, walked the topographies, are qualified with doing cost assessments, I think that's the most fair. If you want to go down the line, I suppose the reimbursement district with some sort of, I think the, I think the life of the LID is 15 years, would be the next most fair. I think the other option in terms of resolving easement issues is, I'm willing to cooperate with the city so long as the assessment methodology is reasonable. If the other folks won't cooperate, you could just pull out, I think it's five or eight lots, it's option two on the handout that I gave you, rather than pulling out all of Lake Cove Drive. I'd also, I guess, remind Brian that in a meeting we had with city staff, that he also agreed that the current assessment methodology was the most fair and equitable, given the unique circumstances of this situation.
Questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
I noticed that, I just glanced through this, I haven't read it, but I do like, you refer to option one, option two, option three, there were actually four options. The fourth being the financial, advanced finance district. Are you opposed to that?
When I refer to option one, two, and three, I was referring to options that I sort of laid out to try and give you a clearer picture.
Okay, yeah, okay. Not necessarily the, in the order that they were.
I mean, I think I'd look at it, the reality is, yes, I've done developments, this is family property, I hold part of the property in an LLC, it's not a, it's not a development LLC, it's never been a development LLC, it's never sold any property. So the reality is, I do have a concern as to why we're here, because I think, I mean, it makes no sense. It just doesn't make sense, because the current assessment methodology is the most fair. That being said, you know, if you guys think it does make sense, I'm willing to discuss other alternatives, because, no, we're not going to develop this property in the near term. Now, who knows 20, 30 years out, but by that time, I think, as I said, the life of the LID is 15 years. I had already said, hey, we'll pay more if we develop it in five years, you know, is it the rail number 10, 15? I don't know. All, you know, I'm willing to do things that are reasonable and cooperate with the city with easements that they need.
Mr. Brown?
My name is Steve Brown, and I reside at 1510 Northeast Lake Drive. Just a couple of comments that I have a little bit of concern on. I guess fairness, the little guy paying for the big guy's development down the road, that kind of concerns me. Or maybe put another way, current owners financing future development. So what that means to me is, is we're paying current charges, today's charges, and if it's developed down the road, we're getting reimbursed, but we put up the money for it. And I don't know that that's fair. Through this whole LID process and charges that were presented to the homeowners in that air, area, some of the homeowners have real concern of the cost per house or lot. I think in today's terms, it's expensive, $26,000, and that's before we got the final plans from the city. So we don't know if those costs are going to go up any more than that, there definitely wasn't a cap on it. So it's going to be interesting to see what those final costs are. I think if you were truly talking about $3,000 to hook up, and $3,000 for your share of the pavement, it doesn't sound like that much, but if you add in everything else, including the SDC charge, which I have a problem with that, being charged to the homeowners, because we're financing the project. So I don't know if it's considered double dipping, if we're, you know, we're financing it and then SDC charge on top of that. So the other thing, that again, once we see, if we do get to see the final engineered plans, my property's on the downside of the grade, not the upside. One of my concerns is, is my property on the downside going to be shored up? Is it going to be my responsibility to retain? Or will my retaining wall be taken down? Those are questions that I have for my property, just for the fact that once you start grading roads and everything, who's responsible beyond that 20-foot, 16-feet, two-foot, two-foot? Do I, am I responsible for shoring up my property? Reshoring it up, or is it going to disturb what I have there now, et cetera? Do agree with, I think it's great that we're considering the runoff. You know, my personal feeling about some of the lake conditions today, we look at sewers and everything, and I think that's a long-term plan that we're working out, the city's supporting us. But I really feel that a lot of the issues with the lake has to do with stormwater runoff. And within that watershed, it's hard to control all of the runoff. So again, good positive step, city's part of it. Hopefully, we do get the lake sewered entirely around, but more importantly, thanks for looking at the stormwater runoff. Questions?
Mr. Brown, did you agree to this LID originally?
There was some apprehension. Due to the cost, there's.
Well, I hear that now, so that's why I'm also asking, so you probably said yes, is what you're saying?
Well, here's my feeling, and I know where the funds come for improvement, road improvement, specifically to the city. I look at the other cities that I've lived in, and the city, or the counter, county, usually does the base infrastructure first. And we didn't have that option in this city. But I'll guarantee you, if the city planned on doing another development out someplace, the city would be involved in all the infrastructure, making sure that the water's in there, the sewer's in there, and everything else. Then, as you develop the lots, you hook up to that engineered line, whatever it is. I'm concerned that that didn't happen here, and I think that the city does have some responsibility to encourage the growth of the infrastructure. It concerns me when a private citizen puts together a program that's not an engineer and forms an LID. Some of the neighborhood knew about it in the last stages, and were asked to come on board. As one of the neighbors said, they live on a fixed income, and to have this kind of a charge on a fixed income is difficult for some of the retired people on that street. So I feel kind of it's been shoved down our throats, we know it's right, we would do anything and encourage the city or the water district to help with grants or anything for the fixed income people on the street, because I think it's going to be a financial hardship for them. It's pretty sad when they've saved their money to build after they retire here and then have something like this that forces them to sell or move back out of the area.
Mr. Brown, let me try again, different way. Are you recommending to us, not that we're making any decisions tonight, but you know, option one was to kill the LID?
No, I don't recommend that you kill it.
So there are going to be costs associated with, and again, this is an LID that the public, the citizens brought forth, and the other citizens have paid for so far, with, as you heard the statement, some 40,000 bucks so far.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm trying to get a sense of, you know, we can, I think that's what we heard, one of the options was flick it in right now and not go any further and just.
I would hope that that wouldn't happen, and if anything, I would say do the overlay, share the cost amongst everyone, and I.
Finance district, that overlay finance.
Finance district, and I think the other thing I would strongly recommend is, is that people that do have larger lots should pay a higher percentage.
Wouldn't that be taken care of in the overlay, though?
Well, I believe it would, the way I understand the overlay, it would.
Yeah, okay.
And then one other comment, 15th Street. For those of you who haven't gone down that, I just, I just don't see the pavement ending at that cross street. It makes no sense to not pave that right up to the Devils Lake Road there.
So again, you're adding to the cost, is that what you're suggesting?
That particular one, there's a park there that, you know, city owns and everything, and controlling the runoff in that area would be important because of the downside also to that park and the trail.
Okay. But you realize as you add, yes, there are, okay. Let us see there. Any questions? Thank you, thanks for, thanks dealing with me.
May I ask a question, though?
Oh.
Yeah, why don't you? You knew. It's been said that the life of an LID is 15 years. With this reimbursement overlay zone, if the 15 years is passed, and it's 20 years down the pike that that, those larger lots are developed, does that money still get back to the original owners, or how does that happen on the reimbursement?
Yeah, the advanced, back in the 90s, we called it an advanced finance district, and I'm still stuck back in the 90s, so it's now called a reimbursement district. A reimbursement district for the advanced financing of public improvements. That district can, is a 10-year district, but has a provision that may be extended, so it can last longer than the LID would last. The idea would be that the property owners, I believe the properties, not the individual owners, are going to be those that are, the benefit of properties would get reimbursed, not so much the owners. If you decide to sell, we're not going to track you down in the Bahamas and give you a check, so. So the reimbursement district can outlast the LID, because the LID is really the entity up fronting the money. And so if someone else comes along later and takes advantage of this up-fronting of the improvement, then those people in the LID would all get reimbursed, credited if it's early, they'd get a check if it was after the LID was fully paid for.
As long as they're still living there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the property.
Or own the property. Okay, so that, is there a, does the reimbursement district die without a renewal at the end of 15 years then, or how does that work?
It dies at the end of 10 years unless it provides for, or is requested to be extended.
Okay.
Most of the time, the applicant does realize, most people take advantage of infrastructure. So when infrastructure appears, people all of a sudden advance their plans and move things along. So every time I've seen one of these districts formed, people take advantage of it, and the people that up fronted the improvement usually get repaid within the 10-year period. But if anyone's paying attention, and people that up front public improvements do pay attention, they would see that they're getting to the end of the 10-year period, then they'd come in and say, "I'd like it to be extended." It happens routinely, grants pass, as a lot of these, they did them in St. Helens when I was there. So people will come in and request it be extended, we could provide for something in the resolution, that it would be automatically extended unless terminated early, or something like that, so can provide for it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name's Paul Robertson, I'm the manager of the Devils Lake Water Improvement District here in Lincoln City, our office is at Orange Coast Community College, North Campus. First off, I'd just like to, you know, point out a few of the key environmental points about this LID, the social issues associated with these, and some key economic points. And I've raised these before, I think it bears repeating, particularly if there's even the hint that this may be abandoned, and I hope that's not the case. But just for that matter, I think it's important to note that, you know, searing the lake and this part of the lake will take off 1 in 14 of all septic systems in the watershed. So it's 1/14 of the steps there that we need to achieve. It's serving as a model for searing the whole lake as it is, and that's exceptional, too. And so by pushing this forward and moving this on, I think it's important and enough just as an example as to how this can be done, and certainly I believe that it can. The road improvements, I think this is a good model moving forward. Narrowing road improvements to the 16-foot footprint actually reduces the amount of impervious surface that would be over traditional development. Traditional development would have, you know, sidewalks and storm drains, and not only is that very expensive, but it adds to the amount of impervious surface which adds to runoff. And the modern thinking is to reduce the amount of impervious surface, obviously, and by not creating additional hardscape, you know, you're achieving that. The conveyance system. The conveyance systems, too, I think modern thinking is moving away from the trapping it in a storm drain and shoveling it down into a pipe and then having to treat it at the end of that pipe, which we didn't even do in the first place, we just shot it down into the pipe, to more of these disconnected systems where you're getting treatment on the parcels that they're attached to through bioswales, through natural conveyance systems that are daylighted to the sun. And that's where a lot of this treatment happens, because there's vegetation growing there, the sun's beating down on the water itself, and those are good things. And so, keeping that footprint narrow is a good thing for this improvement as well. Some of the social components, this was led by, the citizens have brought this forward to you. It's supported by the mass, majority of property owners, affected property owners. I think that's pretty telling, you know, and I know that even when people have maybe have some hesitancies because of the cost, you know, any cost, you're still hearing that people still want sewer on Devil's Lake, and that's, I think, pretty important. Some of the economic points, and these were raised previously, is this is a great savings over, this alternative searing system is a significant savings over traditional gravity systems. And so, by just going this direction, you've already potentially saved people thousands of dollars. And so, I think that's important. This project is also ultimately funded by those properties that are benefiting from it. So, while you've taken on some risk, you know, this twenty thousand dollars, additional twenty thousand dollars, having this additional hearing is taking your time and money, it's all part of a process that's not free. Ultimately, those costs, by and large, are being recouped through your process of the LID. So, I would urge you to continue to move forward on this project and hope to see it in completion by what I've heard was the anticipated date of August 2014, because that, I hope, that window we can still aim for. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Questions? Dr. Oxenholt.
Thank you. Thank you, Erling Oxenholt, eighteen hundred northeast Lake Cove. Sorry, I'm a little stove up today. Well, I've lived here now, I would hate to tell you how many years, but Roger and I go back a long time. I've lived in the house on the lake almost forty years now, and the property there, we've added to it slowly, and it's, I think, one of the nicest pieces around. And I like it because of the privacy. I can tell you, unless I get Alzheimer's or die soon, which I don't expect any of those, that property around me is not gonna be developed during my lifetime, as far as I'm concerned. That's just, it's a very nice piece, and I plan to keep it that way, as long as I can. I was for this project, not because I really want to do anything around there with the project. I've had a lot of opportunities to sell pieces of the property, to develop pieces of the property. It hasn't been in the city in that many years, and even prior to that, there were times when, even with the county, it was originally designed, just several of the pieces were designed, one little piece I have on the lake list had five other pieces with it in the original development for the lake that was there. So, but the lake isn't important. You guys have seen what happened this year with the bloom, but in favor of trying to get something around the lake, 'cause I think it's the right thing to do eventually. If you believe like I do, interest rates are going up, this is not a bad time to do it. I believe interest rates are going up. At some point, you're gonna have to sewer the lake. It's coming sooner or later. And you're coming by West Devil's Lake Road yet, and I think you're gonna end up with another system right along West Devil's Lake Road, because even with this LID, you're not covering all the properties there. So, I encourage you to go forward. I can just tell you, I have heard people who've said, "The reason why my son is interested in getting this property in, because he's interested in developing it." I can tell you, he's not interested in developing it in any fashion, as far as I know, or concerned, or we've had no issues about it. The only reason we own that property is for the privacy at this point. There are several other pieces we own around there that are not in the LID, and we do not plan to develop those either. It's, this property's right across the street from the city park. That Fifteenth Street, I mean, I rarely use it, go down there. I think it's a street that should be paved. I think it's an important street along the city park on the backside that should be paved, whether you do the LID or not. So, I encourage you to try to do the right things, but I can tell you, at this point, there is zero plans that I can see during my lifetime, and I guess you can all guess how long I might live about whether there'll be any development on that property.
Thank you, doctor. Anyone else? That'd be a good time. Sure. Yeah, we need you here, though.
Spoke earlier, Rod Kaufman, thirteen eighty-five Northeast Lake Drive. It wasn't brought up today as one thing on the agenda, but on the original letter we got about the workshop today, one thing that they mentioned on here was whether or not the city should own and maintain the E1 pumps if this system goes through. And I think on any final plan, if this system goes ahead, that needs to be an issue. And I think Mr. Hawker said, "There was a system put up on Thirty-Sixth Street," is that right, that somebody put in, E1 system?
I didn't, I didn't say that.
I mean, not today, but at a city council meeting, wasn't it, if some contractor here they put in an E1 system?
Well, I didn't say it, but yes, it was said.
But anyway, they brought up about maintaining these pumps, and I think with this system is to have the city involved, particularly with the maintaining of the pumps, have somebody trained, 'cause a year ago, when we looked at this, there was only one person in the state of Oregon trained to deal with E1 pumps. And if we have a pump go down, these holding tanks are not that large, they're, I think, eighty gallons or something. And if it goes down and something is wrong with it, if the city can't step in and go on somebody's property and take care of the system, you know, they can swap out the pump, put in a new pump, take the old and get it rebuilt, I think that's a huge advantage.
I would agree.
Let me speak a little bit to that. To me, it really is an issue of how many pumps there are. If there's, if there's just a small handful, I don't know that I really would like the city to get that deeply involved in it. If it gets to be an extensive system, and certainly if all of these, three-quarters of these lots were served, I think we've crossed the threshold, or if we have enough around other areas of the city to justify that. Certainly, if we end up with a backbone system around the lake, it would be my strong recommendation that the city maintain those pumps. Whether or not there needs to be an extra charge for that or not, probably does, because obviously if you contract with a private company to maintain the pumps, you're gonna pay something. Presumably, the city could do it for less and do it quicker. So, yeah, it's just simply a question of how many before we step into that. If there's a lot of them, I believe that sooner or later DEQ will hold us responsible anyway. That is not the current, they currently don't require that the city own and maintain them. I do think that as this program grows in Lincoln City and elsewhere, I think that will become a requirement. And so, yeah, I think we're headed there. Do we wanna bite that off right now? I don't know. Good question.
So, Mr. Hawker, we approved the earlier LID that we've had, and that has the same threshold system.
The reimbursement, reimbursement district?
Reimbursement, yeah. The reimbursement system. And theoretically, so now just theoretically, this LID moves forward with the numbers, would it make sense to somehow incorporate some kind of a threshold hookup number that, between the two, you know, or in the system?
Oh, sure, yeah.
And you have any idea what that might be?
Either way, if we don't maintain them from the get-go, from the initial first one being put in, we need to make provisions with the property owners and the formation of this district, so that we can step in. Now, what that requires is a licensed or access easement, or some such thing that gives us the ability to go in and maintain them.
When we approved the reimbursement district last month, that was one of the issues that came up, and we said we would need access in the event the city took over maintenance of the system. And because it was on the letter, I'll mention as well, that we had mentioned owning the pumps as well as installment payment on the system development charges as two ways to reduce the cost to the people in the LID. So, if, as was noted, you don't just get hit with the cost of the pump, which I understand is over four thousand dollars, but you also have to pay the system development charge if you hook up. So, what we had talked about was going ahead and amending the system development charge ordinance to allow an installment payment on the SDC as opposed to requiring it all one lump sum. And in the event that, if you keep doing these, we're going to need to take over maintenance of the pumps, which means it's cheaper for us to buy the pumps in bulk, which means it's cheaper for the owners to actually buy the pumps from us, so we would have a supply of them. And then, we could also do that on an installment basis. So, if you're looking for ways to reduce the cost to the affected property owners, those are two ways we can look at doing it.
To provide some incentive.
Right.
I mean, we all want to see the lake sewed. I think we all do. Not everyone, but most of us.
So, thank you, Mr. Kaufman, for reminding of that. Anybody else?
Can I just, can I add something to that?
Sure. Ask, since you already worked into your other five minutes, you know, I'm keeping track.
I'm surprised you weren't running me out of here after about six minutes.
Go ahead.
It's the day, but I don't understand how we could start out, the property owners owning the pumps, and then all of a sudden, at some point, after, you know, six or ten, or whatever number, have bought them privately, then all of a sudden you convert to city ownership?
Well, I said city maintenance.
Okay, so, why not just start out that way from the beginning? I mean, you got new pumps, the data I gave you early on was they were averaging, with a decent education program, about basically amounting to what to put into the pumps and what not to, they're averaging like one service call every seven years.
Yeah, they're fairly low maintenance. It really depends to me how many confirmations we would have of how many initial pumps. And then, we'd have to look if, whether we're going to extend terms on that or not, and part of that discussion has to be, where's the money coming from? Okay? If we're gonna offer terms on the pumps, if we're gonna buy them upfront, maybe buy extras so we have a few sitting by and we get the economy of scale in the purchase, and if somebody else wants to hook in, we have a pump, or if some pump fails, we have a replacement. So, there's some financing involved here, so we have to look at some numbers. What would help me the most to look at those numbers is how many people would be committed to hooking on initially this year?
So, I think the answer is we've got a lot of work to do around that, but that's been a common discussion about the need to, in essence, the city to be the maintenance arm for these, especially with the idea of going around the lake and using that as the core, where we'd push more into this system, so.
Yeah, and I think whether it makes, it saves the property owner money or not, it still makes more sense, even for the property owner, for the city to own the pumps.
Agreed, yeah.
If we're gonna do that, I think it should be done from the outset.
Well, we'll get...
I understand that the need for maybe a threshold number, and maybe you just don't activate the system until you got X number, and you let people run off their septic systems until you've got, I don't think you need very many, from what I understand from the technology, like maybe five or six.
But I think that that's definitely on the table, so, 'cause we, I would at least agree with you, that I think it makes sense for the city to be the maintenance arm, so.
The related issue on this, and you should at least be aware of it, 'cause I don't want it to be a surprise later, is if we have five or six hooking on, we're going to need to do regular flushing of the system. That would have to be built into it. These systems are designed so that you get enough flow through them, so that you don't get the material turning totally septic and causing severe odor problems in our downstream manholes and lift stations. We're concerned about that. So, in order to prevent that, we're gonna probably be using a fair amount of water, being freshwater, city water, being pumped through the system. It's a cost to us, and it's a maintenance duty right there.
Okay. Mr. Hawker, could we, changing subjects to back to the roads, I guess as I was taking notes, am I to understand that we've created this new standard for converting gravel roads to some kind of paved, or is that on the drawing board as well?
Well, it's neither.
Oh, okay.
It becomes a de facto...
Well, I'm not into de facto, so...
Well, it becomes...
Yeah, that's, well, that's why I'm bringing it up, is, is there a process that should happen in front of this, that we come up with that standard, whether it's sixteen feet or, you know, 'cause we've got a lot of gravel roads in new Lincoln City and old Lincoln City.
There's a huge number of issues, and I guess if this moves forward with the street paving, I think it's, I don't think we can consider it precedent-setting. Every street is unique, every gravel street that we have is unique in some regard. The amount of drainage improvements that would be needed, how much it's gonna increase vehicular speed and having pedestrian conflicts, ADA issues, where sidewalk, were the rightways adequate and no sidewalks being installed? On this particular street, there is not adequate rightway. What about gravel streets where there is? Are we gonna hold to our existing city standard, which is curb, gutter, and sidewalk on both sides in a wider street? Yeah, there's a lot of issues, and we've been a little bit reluctant to try to address that, simply because it's a big undertaking to really inventory what we have and try to come up with a set of standards for when you can pave a small width and when you can't, when you have to put the whole public improvements in that are required, or whether we can let those go. And it's, it can be a case-by-case determination without having standards. It's a thorny issue, is what I'm saying.
I'd just say, we should expressly authorize this standard, and we should attempt to address the other associated issues that are difficult, like the ADA compliance issue. Make sure we're not authorizing something that's not gonna be compliant, or at least within an exception.
And how do you keep it away from being precedent-setting? I guess that's what...
That's a question for Mr. Appicello.
I think we need to expressly authorize it in the code, and expressly authorize the discretion as being exercised on a case-by-case basis to address the particular circumstances. We obviously don't wanna create more water quality problems for the lake, and so we have to mesh that with all the other requirements, particularly the ADA.
We can certainly list the considerations, and we can address them on this particular street, and maybe that gets us one step closer to having a standard.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
A question on the width of the street, the LID is scheduled with a twenty-foot width, or, yes, twenty-foot width. It was mentioned that sixteen would benefit the property owners a little bit, and I'm just wondering if that isn't a little bit too narrow, but would an eighteen-foot width versus the twenty be workable?
I believe this had two-foot bioswales on either side.
My concern is that if we go twenty feet and we're wiping away some of the property from, that causes a problem for... that causes a problem for a property owner, that maybe by going 18, we wouldn't be doing that?
Well, in this case, we're going, we're going down to 16 to avoid that. And even in some places, less than 16. So for that very reason, this is more narrow even than an 18, but it's because where the driveways catch the existing grade of the road, you know, that driveway's going up and down and widen and change the grade in front of a driveway too much without impacting the private property. So that's where we've really tried to hit that compromise. There's even areas, Terry's told me, that we'll probably be closer to 14, 15 feet just to avoid that very issue.
Well, there's one section that the premises basically was to pave that area within the right of way that is gravelled. There is one section north of, on Voyage, north of 15th. It gets down to basically a two, a one-lane rut going to the last house on 15th if you go to the north. So basically, we assumed that the objective of the LID was to pave the gravel area. So that direction would only be maybe 10 feet wide, just to get, since they're paying an assessment for paved streets, you thought of it would be correct to pave, basically it's a long driveway, but it's in the right of way.
And what about the 15th, the discussion of Northeast 15th coming down from West Devils Lake to Voyage? I understand it's not in the LID and wasn't planned, but is there a?
15th Street from West of Lake Road right now, in the current configuration of the LID, will be paved.
Oh, will be?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it was just that the original smaller footprint wasn't included, but with this new foot, with the expanded footprint, it's definitely part of the paving project.
Thank you. That helps.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question again, and I keep bringing this up, and I've been bringing it up for years. Have we looked at other things besides tarmac as far as a paving surface? There, many countries use some sort of material that lets the water go through it. It doesn't add oils and things to it any more than the cars normally do. And I'm just kind of curious, is there, have we looked at some of these alternatives when we're paving these gravelled roads? I just hate to see tarmac, which has inherent oils running right through it.
We had, we've had a discussion to do previous pavement.
Or also use some of the new technologies, the polymers, the recycled materials that, you're right, those are pretty new technologies and we, they probably, they don't tend to be a lot less expensive, you know, than paving. But certainly an alternative, and the answer to your question is, have we looked at it? Yes. Have we researched it enough to make decisions and really know what's out there and what would reasonably apply and what wouldn't? No, I haven't done that.
The concern that I would have is that a lot of these new technologies are more expensive to install and I'm concerned about hitting the budget, particularly LID.
I'm not trying to be argumentative, but I mean, we have countries like Kenya and, which is very dry, but you also have countries like Laos, which is very, very wet. And they have some sort of a surface on their roadways that you not turn into quagmires when you drive on them that is not tarmac. And I, that's what I'm curious about. You know, there's, there has to be some sort of technology that's being used somewhere that we're not thinking of or looking at, or maybe we just can't do it. I don't know. It just bothers me that we keep putting tarmac down, especially if we're trying to work, improve the water quality. And the first thing that's going to do is through that pavement or off that pavement is take oils. And it just adds to the accumulation of stuff into the lake. So anyway, it's me. I've been arguing about, haranguing about this for about the past 10 years, so.
Stephanie, I guess the other question I have is, you pointed out on Northeast Lake Cove that we've got a water line running down there without an easement.
Yes, we do.
Would somehow we be correcting that issue with this LID? Would the plan be to move an easement up? I don't know where the.
Well, yes, certainly where the, where we're putting in a sewer line, we want to clean that up and get the water, a full utility easement in that area. And we haven't talked about it, but while we're at it, it'd be nice to clean that up and get our water easement or utility easement where our existing water line is all the way up to Devils Lake Road. So we need to look at what that would take.
And is that what, your bullet here in the letter, again, to the property owners, standards for utility installations in unpaved roads, is that what you're talking about there?
Yes, right, exactly.
Okay. Other questions that have come up, wanted to ask staff? Because I think we've still got some comments. Thank you.
Thanks.
Sir, did you have a comment? Sure. Sorry to keep you waiting there.
I'm kind of odd by what's been going on here for the last two hours.
We're not even at two hours yet, so, but that's okay.
Well, I ain't done yet.
Okay.
I'm older, I'm younger and older than I look. I used to work for General MacArthur, see? And so I've been around a while.
We need your name, sir.
When this first started, one of the major plans that I recall was that we wanted this, Mr. Green wanted this to be a model for the other districts around the lake.
Excuse me, sir, we need your name.
Could you give us a name for the record? Just into the mic, your name.
I.M.O.N. is the first name. Pilcher, P.I.L.C.H.E.R.
Great, thank you.
Get that, young lady?
Yeah.
Okay. But Mr. Green came up and he says, one of the things he would like to do is make this a model for other things we're going to do around the lake. And so that to me makes this a little harder burden for you guys to decide. I won't say it's a legacy, but we're talking 50 hookups and what do we got around the lake? Something like 500? And you don't want to multiply a mistake in this 50 by 500. So it's going to be a lot of thought provoking on your gentleman's part. And I just encourage you to do the right thing.
And what might that be? I hear that a lot.
Get all the damn answers answered first, okay?
Okay.
Get everybody talking together, agreeing that this is the way to go. Some of these questions have come up, I would have thought they would have appeared earlier on in this. You realize this is the fourth year. I got my original notice that we were going to do this in August of 2010. And we're still talking about it.
Well, actually, no, we're not. It's moved from your, and I don't, I'm not privy to know when you first got notice or talking about it, but.
Mr. Green sent us a notice.
Yeah, and which is a great way to do it because it, you, the citizens, come forth and ask the city for some assistance.
Right.
So we too then got involved in.
Well, for me, it started in 2010.
Okay.
But when it got to you guys, it was later.
And when it got to us, we agreed to use other citizens' taxpayers' money to assist in your effort to fine tune some of the questions. We've got engineers involved and all this stuff and a design, and that's what you heard earlier, was, you know, it's roughly 90% there. So it's moved along with expertise versus just citizen discussion. So all I'm doing is correcting your impression that it really has advanced significantly.
I have my impressions and you guys heard.
Okay.
That's why we're United States of America.
That's why we're here.
But I hear a lot of good questions from you gentlemen today and thinking. Get it solved in your own mind that it's going to work before you start shoveling money at it. That's all I'm saying.
I understand. Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming forward.
My pleasure.
Who else might like to weigh in?
My name is Marilyn Kaufman, and I live at 1212 Northeast Lake Drive.
Marilyn, could you get right up to the mic? There you go.
Did you hear me?
Yeah.
And I have a little different concern because I already have sewer, but I'm in your plan. And I'm next to the boat ramp, a big lot right there on the corner. I'm in the dip where all those roads drain to the low point. I put my sewer in 10 years ago, and it was like $13,000 worth. And then I put in a catch basin to catch all the mud running off all those roads that were coming down that right into my property. And I haven't heard anything said about how you're going to go through there. And I'm understanding you'd like to get this complete by August. And that's a big vacation rental. And I have three days open that's not rented between now and the end of August. So is that road intended to be tore up so that my guests that are already registered can't go through?
Not being the construction plan or seen it or approved anything, I would think of it as the Nelscott Gap and two years of lots of dirt and tunnels and.
Boy, I hope not.
Only done at night, you know, for your guests to.
I hope you could start and snip timber.
Quite frankly, it's, again, the road being there with people living there, you've got to have access. So, you know, we understand that.
And there's no way that I can see this is an August project.
Yeah. It's good.
At best, if we had the LID today and we put it out to bid, yeah, early fall would be the earliest opportunity.
Are you in this, I'm looking at a map that was up earlier. Are you within this LID area?
Where does your, where are you pumping your sewer to in this plan? Okay, I'm at Regatta.
Your property that is paved only.
Is paved only? That's what I was going after. Okay, that's, okay.
And I also was curious about when somebody lives on this side of the road and somebody lives on this side of the road, how do you, how do you figure out how you're paying for the surface? Is that divided by the guy on that side and the guy on this side? How does that work?
Yeah, yeah.
And so since the city is across from me, what do I pay?
The, I don't know.
Yeah.
Marilyn, the benefited properties are paying their share of the pavement. It's just being broken up, X properties, this is the cost of the pavement, there's X properties, divided by, and that's your share. And in your case, you're the only one with frontage.
Right.
So this property, the open space property that's owned by the city is not in the LID, if that's your question.
Right. And in the event that was ever sold and somebody wanted to do something with it, then there's the reimbursement clause in that? Were you going to use the catch basin that I put in there?
Yes, we were going to talk to you about that storm drain, that catch basin, and getting that squared with who owns what. And that's also part of the final design issues involving stormwater.
Yeah, it goes under my property. And there's been, there was an accident up on East Devils Lake Road or West Devils Lake Road, and a lot of gravel came down that canyon and filled all those culverts, like half full, all the way out to the lake. And they need to be flushed because every time there's a freshet, gravel's coming down from all the gravel roads around there, and it is horrendous. It's been in my driveways, plugged my, my other catch basin that's actually in my driveway, but they're all connected. And so there needs to be some kind of maintenance that sucks those catch basins out so that they're not filling up all the whole drainings underneath because at one point in time they plug them up, they're going to go through my house.
That's part of the, that is the stormwater design, those are on the stormwater design. That's part of the 10% that's remaining. I'm not sure it's really.
It hasn't touched yet, yeah.
Yeah, but we're aware of that.
Good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming forward. We're getting 450-ish. Other people have thoughts, something they've heard, reminder?
Question.
Okay, Mr. Spray?
My question is regards the grants that were mentioned earlier for people that might be lower income, they can't, may have a problem with the assessment. Where would those grants come from or are there actually grants available?
Well, on a larger program, there is low interest loan money available. Who on staff has more information on this? I believe it's through DEQ and we, we have not advanced this particular LID into that, requesting that program.
Is it because it's not eligible or would it be eligible?
Well, we were very recently made aware of it. And I don't know if it fits or not due to its size. What, can you add to that, Stephanie?
Well, I just, I would add that historically, private property would buy their own pumps and it would sort of like a water meter. You pay for the, you pay for the hardware, even though the city maintains it and reads it. It's still something that the homeowner comes up with. But because of the nature of these pump systems where part of the, the bulk of the cost or a large part of the cost is the onsite pumps, DEQ, when we visited them on looking at ways to finance, to fund, grant the overall, the sewer-ing around the lake in a bigger project, to our, you know, actually, to, one of the first times that we heard that they would consider that these onsite systems, these onsite pumps, be part of the financing and that that would be included in the system as a whole. So it's kind of new, it's a new thought. It wasn't part of the assumption when we, when we put together this LID. And again, DEQ's wrestling, this is new to DEQ too. So they're, but they're pretty open-minded on what they would consider fundable under their programs.
Yeah, I mean, if we have the resources, we can fund something and get repaid or presumably there's an, there's an opportunity for, for a large program to get funded, not funded through a repayment, a low interest loan. But just guessing, if we start the process now, maybe we'll get an answer in a year. I don't know. We're dealing with the state. Takes a lot more time.
I just think that anything that can be done to ease a little bit of the upfront cost of the overall program would be helpful to a lot of the owners.
I agree. I mean, I think that's a whole separate issue on the SDCs and on financing, and it has to do a little bit with our budget resources and how many people are pledged to sign up. We can put that all together into, into some kind of a package if this moves forward, probably independent of the LID itself.
Okay.
Meaning that. Meaning that the property owner would, would contract with us, encumber the property, and we would presumably put this on the water bill. In other words, we would get a monthly payment, um, with, with obvious consequences if it wasn't paid.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
But it, it's all good, good stuff to bring up and make sure it's on our list, and part of it is, as we've been, uh, trying to better understand all the obstacles of the trunk line around the lake as well. Some of these things have, have come up to our, um, in anticipation of what might we do.
Well, I think the upfront cost is one of the biggest obstacles probably out there that, uh, deters people from wanting to do that.
I, I think that's right. One, one issue I don't think we've talked about very much, it was raised briefly by the audience, but, um, we haven't done a lot of work saying, should this move forward on its own if we really think the comprehensive system is going to go forward? And we're, we're very hopeful that we can put a backbone sewer around the lake. It's not a done deal. We're, we're seeking financial assistance for about half the cost of a $5 million project. If I knew that was going to go forward and we expand it slightly to include this, would have, would have real success. So there's always that question, do we, do we proceed on a piece of it and find out in six months that we've got a real system for the whole thing?
Which means, it brings up the question then, is there a way to write into this LID that they would be a participant in, in this, which may in fact lower their costs if, if it's around the whole lake?
Well, only if it wasn't done by then.
Well, but, but I mean, that's what I'm saying, is, is there, at least give the option that, that, that might happen, uh, if you're going to.
Once, once we do bid, once we award bids, it's a done deal.
Okay.
Okay?
That's what I was curious.
Except, as was noted earlier, if we take over maintenance and then if we're buying all the pumps and switching them out as part of a maintenance program, then as with the reimbursement district we just did, we would contemplate for future city maintenance.
Other thoughts, questions? It, it wasn't stated earlier, but the, uh, this is a work session, even though we're up here, so there's no decisions to be made today. The intent was to get in and gather more information, take input, um, folks. I guess the, to staff, the, something, we'd bring direct staff at a council meeting to bring us back, something, next steps, uh, would that be?
Yeah, I, I guess I envision that is, we, we come back to you in, in a regular session with a memo that lists the very, the pertinent questions. We need, we need an answer to this, to this, to this, and to this, and, um, I think you heard the questions.
Right.
I mean, they've been buried a little bit, but they're there.
Right, okay. That's good.
My understanding.
Anybody last chance comments? Okay. You guys all right? Steph?
I have one more question.
Okay.
There was a, someone made a comment about the E1 versus the gravity system, and there may be some lots that would be on a down, down slope that might fit the, uh, the gravity sewer system. Would, is that possible to, uh, to have both within an area?
Well, the areas that are in this boundary are lower in elevation than West Devils Lake Road, so there would be pumping involved in these properties to get up to West Devils Lake Road. There's also, um, properties higher than West Devils Lake Road that front West Devils Lake Road. So there's a possibility that there may be a gravity sewer in that section of West Devils Lake Road, um, that will serve some properties to the east or to the west of, of West Devils Lake Road. But there's not a lot of opportunity for, there's no, there's not opportunities for properties within this boundary to gra, to drain to gravity.
But they can integrate okay as far as pumping versus gravity?
Yeah, I mean, you can pump, you can put an E1 pump line and discharge to a gravity system individually too, which is, we have some of those in, on, in the city right now.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Why don't we call it a meeting and thank you, uh, council, for coming this afternoon, and the public for engaging. Appreciate the information. We're adjourned.
Stephanie?
Yes.